All right. Good morning, and welcome everybody to our February 14th board meeting. Happy Valentine's Day. At this time, we are going to have... All right, this time I'll ask the sheriff to please quit throwing kisses.[22.68][22.68](Laughter). Craig, will you pray for us, please?
Sounds like I need to.[29.52][29.52](Laughter). Father, thank you for, again, the privilege of being before you, Father acknowledging your presence here with us, and thank you, you Lord, for being in charge of everything. In times like this, Lord, we think about how little control we have over the nature around us. Father, we rely upon your grace and your mercy in these times. We are calling upon you, Lord, to act in our behalf. Father, call us something good to come from all of this. Help us, Lord, to be more energized in our activities, Father, in our concern for our fellow man, Father, taking advantage of every opportunity to serve others in this time. Just let our focus, Lord, be on you, things that are important to you. Father, help us to continue to appreciate the relationships that you allow us to have with others around us. Father, I pray that as we conduct this, the county today, that it be pleasing, Father, that the responders, those who are out there active in these moments of crisis, Lord, I pray for their protection, their safety. I pray that they would be returned to their families in Christ's name.
Amen. Thank you, Craig. All right, this time we have one person sign up for public comment, Mr. Doug Payne. Come on up, sir. Tell us who you are, where you live.
I'm Doug Payne. I live at 137 Gooley Shallow Road, Brandon. I've talked to Steve a couple of times, and for two years I've been trying to get these from... Stop from being thrown in my driveway, and he told me I ought to come today, so I didn't know he wasn't going to be here.[129.97][129.97](Laughter). Maybe he didn't either, but anyway, I've made numerous phone calls and emails over the last couple of years, and they stopped for a while, and then they started coming back again. And I've talked to a lot of my neighbors. You can drive down the roads in the county, and some driveways may have 10 or 12 of these mashed in the dirt in their driveway, and it's from Clarence Ledger, and it says it's USA Today affiliate, and it's one cover sheet, and then it's a bunch of sales papers in there. And what I've been to different offices in the county, and no one can tell me if there's... If they have a permit to be throwing them out, you know, on our streets or not. I think the supervisor's office has checked. Nobody's been able to find anything to... So I was told to go see Brian and buy some papers or something, but I think it'd be a waste of time if they've got a permit. I just would like to know if there's any way that we can stop these. You know, to me, it's no different than someone throwing a beer can in my driveway every morning or once a week. It's just I have to go pick it up. They're into ditches and, you know, wash down ditches are everywhere.
So do you get the weekly litter?
No.
If you don't, okay.
Never have gotten any, never have prescribed anything.
Right.
This time I sent emails again. I finally called and talked to somebody out of state at the USA Today, the... That was over distribution.
Yeah.
And they assured me that it would never be, and I have several driveways on Gooley Shallow Road that belong to me.
Yes, sir.
And every one of them's getting a paper, and...
So they stopped for a short while?
Well, that was about a year ago. But a few months ago, they assured me I'd never get another one, and it was there the next Tuesday. It's been there every Tuesday since.
So Tuesday mornings when they come out?
That's in our areas when they do them, and I... I mean, I know the person thinks I'm stalking them. I followed them, videoed them, everything else, but I mean, they're just doing their job. I can't, you know? Anyway, that's all I'm asking is can we find out what we have to do to stop the litter on the street?
All right. Thank you, sir. Sheriff? I... I don't... That's... I'm at a loss.
Slade, you got any suggestions?
I'm at a total loss. My suspicion is that there is some sort of First Amendment right that they have as far as... If they assert that they have First Amendment right to broadcast the news or to provide the news, whether they have the right to throw it out in individual driveways or not, if it extends that far, I'm not sure. We'll look into it and see.
Sheriff?
I ran into, not the Clarence Ledger, but I had run into a two plus plane that was throwing out bags with litter in it and put rocks or something like it and throw it out people's driveways. I called them, they kept doing it towards the litter. I got a call from the ACLU saying that I was violating their rights if I charged them with litter. But I still don't understand how, you know, this is unsolicited trash in the driveway just like that two plus plane is the right one.
I don't know that we have a permit. I'm fairly confident.
They don't have a permit. I have a permit just door to door.
Yeah.
So this plane...
So we may need to look into the applicability of a permit requirement. Here's the issue. What we don't want to do is to have a responsibility or requirement that includes on media presentation, representation. We don't want to get into that. We don't want to go too far, but we want to be just far enough to cover the issue that is affecting us, which is the county's right to not have trash all over the roads.
Mr. Payne, do you have a phone number of the person you last talked to, or you just went through their...
I went on their website to the...
Okay.
Leave that for evidence so we can...[382.31][382.31](Laughter). You can get that on any house.
They don't come to fuck it.
I went on the website, got their distribution network, and you can't call Jackson anymore. It sends you out of state now, and... But like I said, this is... It has just a cover sheet that's news, and then everything else, even inside of that page is not new. It's just all sales papers, what it is.
Can I make a suggestion? Can you put this one up with Payne, the deputy out there, as an information report?
Sure.
And I'll try to get the deputies to stop care there and say, hey, this man in the lobby, he's not moving this, and see if that can appeal.
Well, everyone I've talked to out Shallow, everybody would like it stopped and won't be just me.
Okay.
Anyway, I haven't found anybody that asks and wants it. Not a single person.
But if you want to, I can get him to a report. I can get the deputy to stop him, and we'll see if we can stop... I just got him on the phone.
I'll probably use it.
The easiest thing. It'd be a whole lot simpler than trying to design a permit.
Yeah. Thank you, Brian.
If that don't work, we'll get Howard to lose it.[444.02][444.02](Laughter).
All right. Next on agenda, we have the 2020 census update.
Good morning. My name is Kendra Wright. I'm from Brandon... Well, I live in Brandon, but I am a partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau. Happy to be back before you all today. I've been working with the Rankin County Complete Count Committee, which is our title for those who have stepped up and volunteered their time to work on ways to share the message of the upcoming census with Rankin County residents. And so I think it was November the last time we came, and there are a couple of people here. Ms. Ellen is here. Ellen Morgan is here. Oh, and Mr. Segleton is here as well, just in the back. And if they have any comments that they want to add, they absolutely can. I have also met with Craig, but the last time I was here, we talked about a list of things that we were working on, and so as we are now looking at 30 days from households receiving their invitations in the mail to respond to the census, you will begin getting frequent updates on those things, those efforts that are being made to share the word of the upcoming census, the importance of it, and how you can respond with Rankin County residents. And so we have some signage here that... So the state also has a complete count committee, and during the last conversation I had with Craig, we talked about some signage that we could have here in the county courthouse. So they have signs that say "We Count Mississippi" that they have printed. So we have one here for you all to say thank you for your work and to also show that the census is important here, but also we'll be working on getting something that is a little bit, that has some more direction maybe, and the website on it for anyone who comes through here and is looking for where they can go online to respond. And so again, as I've mentioned, we're about 30 days away. That is because between March 12th and March 20th, 95% of households will receive a letter inviting them to respond to the census online. So first time that households are able to respond online, and that's going to be the primary method of response. There will then be about four reminders that are mailed throughout the month of April and where people will get, you know, in case they got that first letter and set it aside and maybe forgot where it was. There'll be reminders, and then with that last reminder, there'll be a paper questionnaire that's also mailed. So online is not the only method of response. Households can also respond using that paper questionnaire, and then there's also a toll-free number. So if someone is looking to maybe respond, they have questions, or they want to respond in another language, we do have translators that are available as well using that toll-free number. And then our non-response follow-up, which is when our census takers go door to door, that will begin and go through this summer. So again, we're about a month... We're less than a month away, and we want to make sure we ramp up our efforts to let everyone know. So we're looking to implement some more efforts. Thank you.
I wanted to step in quickly and just say how much I appreciate Ms. Wright, her work on this. She's done an exceptional job of helping to provide details and helpful commentary about how the county itself can be actively involved in the census and the process of the census. And I wanted to point out that as a part of that activity that the county can be involved in, there is now at the... On the lead page of the county's website, there is a notation in our welcome section that reads as follows, and I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware that if you haven't seen it. So it says, and this obviously is to be for the purpose of the record as well, "The Rankin County Board of Supervisors encourages all citizens of Rankin County to participate in the taking of the 2020 Decennial Census, which will be conducted by the federal government between early January 2020 and approximately the end of May 2020. By participating in the census, Rankin County citizens will make it possible for Rankin County to, one, achieve accuracy in the count of our population, two, assist the county in qualifying for state and federal grant funding, three, help establish a proper basis for determining federal, state, and local legislative apportionment, and, four, assist in determining jurisdictional boundaries related to constituent representation." Those are just four examples of why it's important for our folks to participate in the census. I also want to thank the Complete Count Committee for volunteering their time, their effort, their energy, their contacts, their skills. They are doing an exceptional job, and they have provided some information to your departments that would be in the nature of publicizing access to the census. And so I would encourage all of our departments, as they have an opportunity to interact with the public, that there's some sort of reminder about the census at some point in this process. I want to stress again so that our people understand, in the old days, you got a paper form to fill out in return for your census, or at least I recall that, and then you would have folks that would show up. So now we have the ability to do all of this online, and it's available to do quickly, easily, and so for all of our citizens that have that online access, if they will take advantage of that opportunity, this can... This whole process can be handled in a matter of minutes.[803.23][803.23](Laughter). So I want to encourage them to take advantage of that opportunity so that they don't end up having to do a paper form and don't end up having to deal with a knock at the door kind of situation. So that's just our encouragement on that. Thank you, guys, for letting us participate.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on public comment, we have Ms. Franco. Come on up, sir.
Good morning.
We missed you last one.
Good morning.
Well, you know, I live up on Reservoir, and I got a little concerned because the ducks and mallards and everything else were going two by two, and I don't know where they were going, but I...
I started.[843.61][843.61](Laughter).
I was thinking you couldn't get here because of that intersection, that Old Fane Road and...
Well, I wasn't going to bring that up.
I figured you were trapped. You couldn't get here.[853.43][853.43](Laughter).
I wasn't going to bring that up. My neighbors had called me, but I don't have any... Fortunately, I don't have anything to do with that.
Did y'all design that for us? Y'all didn't design that?
That's an adequate note.[864.57][864.57](Laughter). An emphasis, no. We don't do road work. I'm the first of engineers here. I just wanted to give y'all a brief update. What you're getting, first page is just kind of a summary of projects. The second page is some costs, and then I have the backup data on the spreadsheet. Just wanted to update you today. Where we're at, if you see on that item number one, that's the current projected cost, current and projected cost. You can see the courthouse at $20,357,341.45. Mistrainer is finished as far as the construction contracts are concerned. So that gives you... Brings you to a total of $24,558,414.40, leaving, and that is the current and projected cost, leaving a projected bond balance of over $400,000. And that, you know, that can fluctuate a few thousand here or there, but that's generally where we're at. On the courthouse schedule, their latest schedule from the contractor says completion by March 6th. I'm really thinking it's going to be at the end of April unless...[938.43][938.43](Laughter). Or further, depending on the rain. You know, I don't know what to say more about that. I just, you know, I'll be... I'll answer any questions.
I think at this point, there's a race between that new hotel in Flowood that started about a year later.
Well, I was out... I like the hotel.
Yeah.
Well, you know, I was out there Tuesday, and yeah, Tuesday, and it's just, they've got some of their paving done, but every time they get ready to start, they just... They can't, but anyhow. They are working on the inside, but...
All right.
We've approved... Last meeting, you approved the change order number 1141,000, and all this is included in the above figures. Furniture installation is scheduled to start in March. Again, that's tentative on them finishing. I will, and I'll come back to it in a minute. I've got an issue that the city has requested that I need to bring before this board on adding some sidewalks. On the re-roofing projects, the DHS is complete. The ELC is 85% complete and can be finished if we ever get a few days of rain. We are looking at bringing before the board a proposal to maybe skin the outside of that EPIS while we've got the contractor there. Some of it needs to be repaired, and some of it just needs to be done, and I think it would be more economical to do it now, but I don't have that final figure, but we're talking about something less than $20,000 probably. And then the other project that we had started on, but I didn't realize, we really didn't have a... Get going on that, was CMRLS. CMRLS, the Central Mississippi Regional Library System, re-roofing. And I don't think that actually been approved by the board, and I'm just... We're not doing anything on it anymore right now. That's just if the board's for consideration. It's got some needs on it, some bad needs, but that's something that the board have to decide if y'all want it re-roofed or not. And then as soon as courthouse gets sued, we're ready to put the chantrey out for bids, sanctuary renovation, but there's been some things added to it, and I'll come and give y'all an update on cost projections on that at some point.
What's been added to it?
Well, the bottom floor, the... I think that's where the...
The floor?
Yeah, election commissioners, so...
They had some modifications they wanted to make?
Yeah, we weren't going to do anything to it, but they need a... We're just moving, I think, a while or two just downstairs to give them more room for on election night, I think, is the main thing. But I will bring, as soon as we get a little bit closer to finishing the courthouse, I'll bring you a little bit more details on costs and things of that nature, because we're still kind of playing with that. The other one, basically upstairs hadn't changed any on it as far as what's going in there. And so that's where we're at on that. If you'll turn to the second page, it'll give you kind of a summary of the cost, where we're at. The original bid on courthouse is $18,347,640. That's the contract. The furniture contract is $1,190,877.27, and there's been a little over $1 million of approved changes now. Now, those changes were always anticipated. We took some of that money out of the original contract to save some overhead costs, like that's audio visual, the security, the landscape. Those were all planned for. What was not planned for was $257,000 of bad soil that had been run into. So that brings you to a total right now of $20,570,841.45. We received in the last week a request from the city of Brandon to add sidewalks along North Street and Timberline Street to go along with their downtown improvement program, which I think they've already started that process. There was never any sidewalks there in the project. There were never any requested by the city or anybody else, but they have now sent us a request. I've done some brief looking at it. It's about 3,000 square feet of sidewalk, and so there would have to be some regrading done minor, I think, but you're probably looking at, and I would have to get a figure from the contractor somewhere in the $20,000 range if y'all want to do that. I'm just passing that request along to the board for consideration.
Thank you.
Yeah.[1244.15][1244.15](Laughter). Y'all can do with it what you want. If you're looking, item number three, those are the contingents... Those are the credits that we're expecting back, more or less, $85,000 in contingency. We think we are going to get about $50,000 back from the bad soils, that they're not going to have to... They didn't have to go as deep on some of those things as they thought. The graphic wall allowance, I think at the last meeting, the board decided to take that out of the contract. We have a $25,000 electrical utility allowance because generally speaking, we don't know until energy gives us price. They're going to have to relocate one pole, so we're thinking that we're going to get about $8,000 or $8,500 back out of that allowance, and then... What pole was that? Because I want... That's on North Street, right... Well, it's kind of toward the corner of North and Timberline. There's a pole there that they've got... Is it wood or a fiberglass? No, it's wood. I think it's wood, if I remember right. Pretty sure it's wood, I think. And it... They tend to have given us a price of $16,000, and it's got... I think it's got some primary line on it, but it was in the way of grading mostly. It just... They couldn't get their grades done for that. So it's always... We've always known it was going to have to be relocated, but energy kind of... They just wait till the end, until they're ready to do their work before we can get a price out of it. So that's where we're going. And there's probably going to be in the last $40,000 credit for testing that was not used. We normally do an allowance, and we never know exactly all the figures on that. So there's about $213,500 credit that's coming back, and that figures into the overall leftover. And again, you can see the mistrainer cost, and so that's where we get the figures. Then behind all that, and I can go into it if you want, or even look at it...
That's good.
...to the spreadsheet. So that's where we're at. I'll answer any questions as best I can.
Before we go making a lot of modifications to your design, I think you need to get with our administrator and our attorney, probably, before we get wholesale changes made to the design.
Talking about the sidewalk?
No, talking about chantrey.
Oh, chantrey. Oh, yeah. Okay. Yeah. No, I will.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're... We've met. Craig and I met and walked through there. Now, this is all at that request.
Yes, ma'am.
Carl, did you get far enough on the CMRLS to determine an estimate?
I have not. We can get that. The main thing, we did get up on that roof. They've got... It was re-roofed maybe five, six, seven years ago, but it doesn't have enough drainage, and it's got a sump pump up there, which I've never seen on a roof before, which means that they're having to pump the water off of it. They've got issues with skylights leaking.
How long is a warranty for one of those?
I have no idea, and I don't know. I guess you're going to put the sump pump up there, but I know it's causing them severe damage in the...
I can develop... It really is going to depend on how far you want to go. The problem, the cost thing, is going to be dealing with those side lights, I mean, skylights. The roofing itself is going to take some looking, too, but I can come back with a preliminary cost figures.
The roof that we're getting on ELC, what's the warranty on it?
20 years, generally speaking, 20-year. I'd have to look at the specs. 20-year unlimited is what we typically expect.
I would think the one that, if we'd only had it done for six years, surely we have some warranty on that.
That's what I understand. I don't have any documentation on that, but that's what I... It looks like a fairly new roof.
Yeah.
It's been up... And what... The way those warranties generally work is there's some depreciation value into it.
Yeah.
And so they start doing it, but I don't know. We can check with and find out.
I'll look and see if there's...
Yeah.
All right. Good deal. Anybody else? Thanks, Carl.
Okay.
All right. Moving on our agenda. Do we have a motion to approve in minutes?
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Daniel, second by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just have it. Consent agenda?
Yeah. Motion approved.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just have it. It's going to be pretty easy. Sheriff? It's unusual you got to have something to say.
You see, I came to you last year. I was going to... I didn't realize we were losing so much money holding out-of-county kids, so we were going to stop it this year. And after talking with Randy, and hopefully, I really had got to sit down and talk with Laura about it, but I'm all about trying to offset the cost to the Rankin County taxpayers. We're still having people bring kids over from out-of-county and pay the $350 a day. We still have to have the educational staff out there just for our kids. We have to have the medical out there just for our kids. So I'm willing, if y'all are willing, to go ahead and continue to accept out-of-county kids at the $350 a day, hopefully offset our costs just a little bit. It'll make a little bit of money for us, but just...
You need a motion for that, to approve that?
Yeah, I'd like to... I think we had a motion. I know we... It indicated by a scent that we wanted to stop it, so I'd like to get some sort of authority to start it back.
It's on there for potential action.
All right, good deal.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the sheriff's request.
All right. Motion by Daniel, second by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just have it. Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, you got a list today?
Yeah.
Holy cow.
Item A, petition to change the assessment, real and personal property assessment role.
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just have it.
Item B, petition to adjust 2019 home state exemption supplement role.
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, just have it.
Sorry, I was reading. I was reading at the same time.
Item C...
Hey, John, can we wrap some of these together so we don't have to go through and see any one of them?
All right, we can go C through... Aye, if you want to.
Do it.
I would prefer, if we don't mind, let's do C, maybe C, D, E together, and then we'll And then we'll do F, G, H, and I. How about that?
All right, so C, D, and E will be my.
C, D, E?
Aye.
Yeah, so C, D, and E for approval.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
So then I'll take F through I, which these are just registration and conference fees, traveling. Yeah, so the remainder to approve.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you all.
I really want to hear you read all that. Mike, you don't have anything, do you?
Yeah, it's an invisible ink on your paper.
I think what we do on Harrison, we just put him down as blank. You better not do that to word, you hear me? You better not put him blank down there and let him go.
Oh, we left that blank, me and Janice just got together this morning. Want to do two approvals of AT&amp;T permits, one for Tricken Bridge Road and one for Captain Drive.
Bless you. Is that all?
That's it.
Yeah, so then, do we need to make a motion to add those? We had to add those, Janice?
Yeah.
So we'll make a motion to add those to the agenda.
All right, motion by Daniel, add, second by Brad, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
And I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll it up, Mr. Parker. Boy, Janice really is slack now. We've got Charles Parker on here.
She's got the first name right. First name is correct.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's just that middle initial.
It's the middle initial that's the doozy there. For the record, I am Charles T.
Charles T.
Don't want anybody to be confused.
Charlie T.
Mr. President, the first item we have on the agenda is Valley Brook Subdivision Part One. We recommend an approval of final plat and a letter of credit in the amount of $134,995.30.
Yeah, I think we had a text from Sheriff saying he's good with all that, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item B is the Hanley Circle Street Improvements Project. We recommend an approval of payout application number one to Thornton Construction Company, Inc. In the amount of $198,000, $198.42 and authority to issue the check.
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Brad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item C is on the North Shore Spillway Road Project. We recommend an approval of payout number seven to Hemp Hill Construction Company in the amount of $203,065.99. That should say for work performed through December 2019.
I was about to say, there wasn't nothing done in December.
I'll tell you what that is. That's base asphalt and binder asphalt and signal items. That's 90%, 95% of that payout probably. And what it is, is we have a lot of trouble if we don't get all the test reports and material certifications and all those, like the traffic signal items, they have to have material certifications with them saying that the product shipped is the same thing that was approved in the submitted data. So we hold the pay until we get those certifications. So at the end of the job, we're not chasing all those because you can't finalize the job without them, so.
How much additional money, do you know? I mean, I should have probably asked you this before, but how much additional money outside of this $200,000 will we owe, you know?
Uh, we're, this will bring us to 1.1, contract's 1.6. So we've still got $500,000.
How much is that contingency?
None of it's contingency. You don't, that's M dots, you don't hope contingency.
Oh, Captain. All right, good deal. All right.
So how much will we owe Hemp Hill once this pay, the county, the county was?
Say 500.
500,000?
The contract, yeah.
The whole thing was only 400 for our part.
25% of.
Right.
We'll still have 25% held out on our part.
Correct.
Of the balance. I don't want us to be zeroed out, is my point.
Are you asking, what are we, what capacity do you have?
What other, yeah, well, I'm asking what other cash left do we owe Hemp Hill once it's done? The county, the.
Once this payout is done?
The county's total parts 400,000, 380 or whatever it was. So how much of that 380 that we will owe do we have left after this 200,000?
So we have about 500,000 left in the project and 25% of that would be counted.
125,000.
I got you. All right, make a motion to approve.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Slade.
If I can get us to do items A through E, which is setting nuisance hearings. All of these will be settings for February 27 at 9:00 AM.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Item F is a public hearing on the Kenneth and Sheila Jenkins conditional use permit request at 110 Mountain View Road. This is a District Three property. We will open that public hearing. Mr. and Ms. Jenkins are seeking a conditional use permit to place a new 32 by 70 manufactured home at 110 Mountain View Road. This home is, will have brick skirting and a professionally built front and back porch. Mountain View is a private road that is within the boundaries of the Indian Mound subdivision. So this is a five acre parcel and it's zoned RE1. All right, that public hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Kenneth and Sheila Jenkins conditional use permit request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We will close that public hearing. At this time, it may be appropriate to take action.
I'll make a motion to accept. Second.
All right, motion by Brad, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, item G, well, and for the record, that hearing is closed. I think I did close it, but just for the record. Item G is a public hearing on the Deborah and Robert Smith conditional use permit, 540 Highway 468. It's a District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Deborah and Robert Smith are seeking a conditional use permit to place a new double wide manufactured home at 540 Highway 468. This is a 1.14 acre parcel zoned RE1A. Ms. Smith has lived on the property for 56 years. She purchased the property from her parents and is currently living in their existing home. A manufactured home was previously located on the property but was removed. The Smiths plan to tear down the existing home after they move into the new double wide, if approved. So that public hearing is open. I'll ask at this time if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Deborah and Robert Smith conditional use permit request. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter at this time.
The only thing is on the tearing down, we need to put in there, say, a six month tear down.
Yes, so let me close the public hearing and then we will move forward with the discussion of specific conditions. That public hearing is closed for the record. Mr. Calhoun is suggesting an additional condition or a condition that we need to make sure that it's clear that there is a limited amount of time after the new home is located on site. There is a limited amount of time for them to actually remove the existing home structure. Do we have a proposal on how long that should be, Brad?
Mr. Smith, you want to come up?
No, I'm just going to say two to eight months and then plus weather conditions.
Well, that, six months would get you about August, would it?
Yeah, but we still got to get one moved in, you know, one moved in, one set up, we got to move into it. And then start on that, so I don't know, I don't have no one to say.
Well, that's the only feedback that I've had from people. They're just wanting it done and I mean, I think you can get it done less than a year.
Oh, yeah.
If I could suggest maybe something that would be easier for all of us to sort of understand and maybe please, Brad, would be to give an outside window of both moving in the new unit and having the house down. I would say maybe give an entire year to get that entire process done. So 12 months to get the new home in place and the existing home taken down. That would be the window of opportunity there. So as soon as they can get the new home in place, they can begin taking the existing home down. The faster they get the new home in, the longer period of time they would have to get the existing home down. If they choose to wait and get the new home in in six months, then they only have six months left to get the existing home down. So it really, it puts the ball in their court to handle it that way, just one year from the date of approval.
Is this the one that we had that was a White House? Aren't there a bunch, you only, you didn't get complaints from the neighbors on that?
We had one complaint, but their only complaint was they wanted the old White House, make sure it wasn't going to stay there. That's the only complaint.
Well, I mean, you're taking it down anyway.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to take it down. And you know, the, I think I talked to your wife.
Yeah.
They could do a training deal on it and burn it down after you got your everything out of it that you wanted.
That would be ideal, if they, if they put it all the way on the ground once they get.
But now, there's going to be some stuff left there that's going to have to be cleaned up.
I understand that. I thought my halfway walls had, it was kind of, they burned up pretty well. Yeah, I would love to do that, but I could think of things weak.
But now, you don't need to go in there and tear like all the floors out where they can't, because they're going to do a training.
Mr. Calhoun, do you think the one year from approval to full completion, new unit in, old house gone, just do a 12 month window on the whole thing, that would be easy for us to police.
They're not going to be able to move a trailer in there for.
Probably a couple of months. So that should give them plenty of time to get the project completed.
Okay, so one year from date of approval.
On everything. All right, any further conditions, any further discussion on that? Okay.
Well, I just, you know, there's a bunch of nice houses out there. Can't imagine they all were okay with it.
It's zone that you put for them.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we can do that near all agriculture, you know, but. It's your district, man.
Make motions to approve.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion by Brad, second by Jared, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Okay, item H, Mr. President, is a public hearing on the Matt Jones conditional use request at 601 Bethel Road, it's a District Three property. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Jones is seeking a conditional use permit to operate an event and entertainment venue in an existing cabin lodge, home that is on the property at 601 Bethel Road. Home is located on 14 acre parcel. It's part of a 200 acre family farm located on Bethel Road. It's a 3,300 square foot house with four covered porches, decks, and patios. The driveway and parking areas are crushed limestone and slag. Mr. Jones is planning to add additional gravel parking that would be on the other side of Bethel Road at the address 576 Bethel Road. If, in the event that there is overflow parking needed, this property is zoned A1. That public hearing is open. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Matt Jones conditional use request. Anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. We will close that public hearing. If there are any discussions about conditions, now would be the time to talk about that.
Mr. Jones, you are going to do like the fireworks, handicap parking will be asphalt. All right. All right, we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion by Brad to approve.
Second.
Second by, one of them two, Daniel?
He got that one.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
Mr. President, item I, I did close that public hearing, didn't I? Okay. Item I is some cleanup work. We were recently contacted by an organization that is affiliated with a credit card damage recovery piece of litigation. That's a multi-district piece of litigation that's going on across the country by, for situations where credit card issuers have overcharged all of their customers, their merchants, for the fees associated with processing the credit card charges. How that affects, potentially affects Rankin County is that we have credit card acceptance throughout the county for various fees and licenses and other things. And so there is the possibility that the county is entitled to some form of reimbursement. But in order to pursue that, in order to look into that issue, the county has to be represented in that matter. And so I am suggesting, allow me as board attorney to take that responsibility and at least explore that and see if we're entitled to any sort of recovery. That's the whole purpose behind this particular agenda item.
I just don't want to spend, you know, 2,000 to get 500.
No, exactly. So what happens here is, this won't be a litigated matter as such. This is to determine whether or not we have the ability to participate in the multi-district litigation. We would just simply be among all of the other litigants in that matter. Shepherd, it won't require me to do any specific legal work on behalf of the county other than to stand as the representative for the purpose of communicating with the lawyers.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
I have a motion.
I'll make that motion. Now, do we have to take action on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
All right, motion by Jared to approve.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Item J is acknowledgement of receipt of an application for tax exemption that was submitted by CMPDD to Rankin County, which is a nonprofit corporation. Mississippi Code annotated 2731-1, subparagraph B, allows for the granting of that tax exemption and I'm recommending that we grant the tax exemption to CMPDD.
Yes, so moved.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared, any discussion? Glad they moved in here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I'll make you work a little bit today.
Item K, guys, you may remember that we had a representative of the furniture supplier, the vendor.
Yes.
On our new courthouse that came before you guys, a couple of meetings back. The request that was being made was for tender of payment of 80% of the invoiced amounts, which would allow for a retainage of a 20% being held by the county. The issue that we had, obviously, is that these invoices had been submitted against purchase orders that had already been issued. The invoices had been submitted, but we had not yet received possession of the furniture. And so by virtue of state law and communications that I had with both the Attorney General's Office and the Ethics Commission, we were not in a position to be able to simply tender some amount or all of the invoice payment to the vendor because we had not received possession of what we had ordered. And so that was a technical issue. No accommodation had been made by Rankin County or by the vendor to deal with the possibility that we'd be 15, 18 months late getting into that building. And so that furniture is warehoused in Atlanta and the vendor is incurring storage costs as a result. You guys gave me the permission to go and ask for some judicial intervention here. Our three chancellors have executed an order that is laid out here before you, authorizing us to make payment against the invoice of the 80% invoiced amount, retain the 20%, and get our vendor out of the hot box here, okay? So this is the right result and I'm thankful, I'm very grateful that our chancellor saw the inequity that was visited upon us here. And so we all now have the protection of a court order authorizing us to make this payment. So I'm asking you guys to acknowledge and to also, to authorize the payment, which is in the amount of $539,778.40. That's 80% of the furniture cost.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared, any discussion?
They are having to pay up storage on.
Yes, sir. And they will continue to incur that storage cost, by the way, until we give them the signal that we can receive the furniture. And they understand that. There is nothing else that we can do with that, according to the Attorney General.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Mr. President, item L is a ratification of emergency action that's taken pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated 19592.1 that allows us to enter onto private property at 194 Spring Hill Road in Florence to provide proper street drainage of the public road, Spring Hill Road, and to provide county emergency response access to the occupants at that address. And you would also be ratifying any expenditure of county funds made pursuant to your declaration.
Make motion to approve.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Daniel, any discussion? I'm just curious, what is it?
Yeah, so we had, as a result of all the rain that we've had, we had a washout at the point where a culvert is installed to account for road drainage. The culvert completely washed out. You had a three foot wide ditch and no way for the elderly gentleman to actually be able to get out. He had a, the day that the breach opened, he actually had a doctor's appointment.
Hospital.
Hospital appointment. That, there was no way to get in to get him or no way for him to get out. And so we scrambled to deal with that reality. The issue here is the placement, the width of the right of way versus the extent of the breach necessitates the board making this finding under this specific statute so we can address it. Because there's no way for us to deal with the entire issue without getting onto private property.
Sounds like our road department stepped up and did an admirable job.
I think Jared took a steel plate down there from Temple.
I think it was a team effort.
Look, they got a call about 6:15 in a panic, you know, and I haven't had a huge steel plate.
The layover?
We hauled in to help just get them out by the time we got everything together. But no, the crew, Mike had somebody sitting there waiting so I could bring it in there and they just set it in place to help get them out.
Yeah.
It was a pretty bad situation in that he knew the area and it's not, like, the road ends there and then that blew that out, completely out. And I went down there that morning, sure enough, I mean, you know, they're sitting up in here. There's no way to get in and out to them with anything.
Good job.
Yeah, they're elderly and he's in some, had some real health issues. Anyway, appreciate it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
Got a few items in additional and one item in executive, so I'll just give you guys a little quick warning.
You say you had an additional item?
Yes, we're going to have a couple of items to add as additional business.
Aye. Ms. Laura?
Thank you. The first item I have this morning is authority for the sheriff's department and the district attorney's office to jointly share the cost and host a one-day training presented by Phil Chalmers, or I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right, on teen profile killing and school shooters. And that will be March the 31st at the safe room. Authority to issue the check in the amount of $3,500 Authority to issue the check in the amount of $3,500 and the District Attorney will reimburse the county for their portion of it.
Yeah, some move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I have it.
The next item is authority to pay the employer portion of the fees to the public employees' retirement system for the chancery clerk, circuit clerk, and constables for the new term that began January 1 of 2020.
Yep, some move.
Second.
Motion by Daniel, second by Jared. Any discussion? Why do we have to do that?
That, we did it last term. There was a new law stating that at the end of the year, after they filed the portion that belonged to the county, we could pay.
We have to vote on it every year?
Yes, every term.
Oh, every term?
Yes, every term.
Okay, all right. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The next item is authority to refund MPE services in the amount of $593.40 for the employee portion of a worker's comp check that was paid in excess and authority to issue that check back to MPE.
Motion approve.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I have it.
Okay, the next item is request approval to set the Rankin County Cleanup Week for May 4th through the, May 9th and the Household Hazardous Waste Day collection at the end of that week on May 9th and authority to publish the notice twice on that cleanup event.
Motion approve.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have it.
The next one goes along with that one, and that's authority to advertise for written proposals on the Household Hazardous Waste Collection to publish a notice for that.
Motion approve.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Authority to renew and extend the contract with Environment Masters for the maintenance and inspection of our HVAC system for a period of six months in the amount of $51,572. We had already extended it, but since we have a new maintenance director that is not familiar with anything yet in all of the equipment that we have, we got a, a quote to renew it for six months to give him time to assess everything that we have to go out for bids again. And this is no increase as to what we're paying right now.
Okay.
Yep, some move.
Motion by Daniel.
Second.
Second by Jared. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Authority to contract with Delta Computer Systems for the uploading of the 1094 and 1095 form files to the IRS for a fee in the amount of $500 and authority to issue that check.
Motion approve.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? Good, can we just go ahead and have that set up for you where you didn't have to pay them? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right. Is that it, Laura? Okay. Bishop, you have a couple items?
Yeah, I do. If I can get, well, the first, let's, I know you'd like, you have a penchant, Mr. Bishop, to add everything that's gonna be added.
Yeah.
We'd like to do that. I'd love to be able to do that. Unfortunately, we're not that well-prepared. So let's be a little more free-form. The first one, the first item that I want to add is, is potential action on awarding a bid for the steel erection at the Pierce Road Fire Station project, if you recall. We, we ended up last time having to reject bids and come back because we didn't, there was an issue that we had to address, so we rejected those bids and we went back out for bid, and now we're prepared. We've received two additional bids and we're prepared to award that contract. I wanted to work with, go over that with you. So there's two bids that have been submitted. The first is on behalf of RK Wallace Construction out of JS, Mississippi, and the second is Mr. Donald, is it Spates?
Spates.
Mr. Spates with Spates Repair. And so Mr. Wallace's, or RK Wallace Construction was 17,000 for the steel erection. Mr. Spates is $9,750. So we would like to award the steel erection portion of this contract to Spates in the amount of $9,750. So that's, that's an action item, if we can get that added, and then an approval on that.
I make a motion to add this to the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Jared to add, second by Daniel. Any discussion? I, I thought we already moved past it and we, like, I, I didn't know, I thought we already poured the slab, though.
No, well, we have, we're pouring, as we're working, trying to pour the slab as we speak, but you gotta put the building up after you pour the slab.
I thought that this had to be done before all that. Just, okay.
No.
All right.
You gotta pour your slab, your building's sitting there.
Yeah.
The purchase of the building's there, but then you pour your slab, then you have to have an erection cost. And now this is erection.
Picking it up.
Erecting the building.
Never mind, I was thinking something else. I thought he was talking about that hardening deal. Never mind, I was on something else.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Anyway, I make, I'm giving to the vote on that.
That's it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
I make a motion to accept that.
The 9,000?
Yeah.
All right. Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion?
I don't know, looks like they're wandering around back here.
Hold on just a second. Y'all go ahead with what y'all do.
Can we go ahead and, we can go ahead? Make a motion to?
Yeah, this will be another add.
Okay. Make a motion to approve. I make a motion, add this to the, well, no, we already had.
I just, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay.
Well, I mean, all this moving around, it just had everything messed up.
Yeah.
No, and also, I would like to say, Mike, you guys did a great job getting in there to ease the poor people's feelings, minds, yes, great job. They were sitting there waiting on me and everything.
One additional item on the, that really goes with the slab portion of this is that there is some additional plumbing requirement that was not accommodated, simple oversight was not accommodating the original slab specifications. And so all we're, all I'm asking you guys to do is to acknowledge on the record that there will be a small additional cost to the slab of $1,000 roughly. This is the estimate.
Right.
To get all of the plumbing that will be necessitated by, for this building in place. So we just need an acknowledgement on the record that there is an additional cost of $1,000 that will be for additional plumbing-related services as a part of the slab, all right?
All right. Do I have a motion to add this item?
I make a motion to add this item to the agenda.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Approved.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jared.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
My EOC Director, I think this is an appropriate time for us to get an update on our situation with respect to the Pearl River and the Crest and the modeling and all that other kind of stuff. I want him to come forward.
People are freaking out now. I've got about five text messages this morning over here.
I got one last night that's on the, um, the farm, uh, Facebook, something.
Take my phone.
That we were gonna close Florence Barren Road. Water's not been over it, wasn't over it in '83.
Don't you have some roads flooded in your district?
I just have them underwater, yeah.
I mean, we got roads closed?
Yeah. Riss and, it's gonna have some real issues.
This is different than the map you gave us.
This is, uh, this is actually the same information that's on the big map, it's just reduced down. What we did was put us four operational zones in so that, uh, to kind of get this thing down to a manageable size. And I echo your, your concern on the phone calls. I've still got about, now about 60 voicemails that are still on my phone from some pretty high-rate citizens because we can't give them an exact determination down to the minute of when the water's gonna be coming through their back door. So a couple of things, just to kind of, kind of give you a rundown of where we are. Brian this morning went into a conference with the Pearl River Valley folks this morning. We're at 296 and a half, the river is at 35.16, and they're discharging 65,000 cubic feet per second. That is going to continue to raise the Pearl River up to the 38-foot mark. Once it hits 38 feet, the plan is to close off the gates and then bring the reservoir up to 299. Once it hits the 299 level, 100% of the water that comes in the reservoir will go out the gates. They're predicting somewhere in the neighborhood of 77,000 to 80,000 cubic feet per second after we hit the 38 mark and bring it to 299. That's where our issues are gonna come in, and we're looking at overnight, Saturday night into early Sunday morning before, before those things happen. The Corps Engineers is now on the north side of the reservoir, putting in some digital flow meters so that they can accurately measure exactly the cubic feet per second inflow to the reservoir. And yesterday we shut Old Brandon Road down and they were going out every hour, on the hour, checking the outflow. Just so you know, Old Brandon Road is completely closed now because water is over the bridge. We have got, uh, we had a huge meeting yesterday afternoon about 2:30 with the players here in the county, with the Rankin County Sheriff's Department, the Road Department, the City of Richland, City of Pearl, City of Flowood, and the Reservoir Fire Protection District. Just kind of getting our heads wrapped around this thing and busting this thing down into some manageable, manageable groups. Obviously, your EOC is here to augment these response agencies and, and hopefully provide them with whatever resources that they need. We've been able to identify some of those, just so you know in the back of your head. We've got 13 high-water trucks available, one mass transit trailer with the Rankin County Road Department that is up, ready, and available. We've got a minimum of eight boats that are ready. One of those we're gonna dedicate with a true swiftwater rescue team so that they can be easily deployed, should be. We've got four school buses on, on standby. Two MEMA area coordinators are waiting on me to call them to bring them in to the EOC should we end up having to stand that up to a 24/7. We ordered 40 barricades from MEMA that's actually coming from the Department of Transportation to do road closures. Hopefully, they're gonna be there today, and an additional 10,000 bags. I also have a DR3 and a DR4 that I would ask the board if it's your pleasure that you may want to enter into. The DR3 is a, basically a proclamation of existence of a local emergency. And what this is gonna do is help me facilitate getting the resources from MEMA or outside the state of Mississippi should those situations arise, which I kind of feel that they will. The second one is a DR4, and this is basically requesting the governor of the great state of Mississippi to proclaim a state of emergency for the Pearl River flooding. I have both of those here should you decide to take action on that. What our issue is, and this is the part that scares me, this map that you have in front of you, the one that we've been looking at for the last, really, realistically about the last month. This is 1979 data, I hate to beat a, beat a horse down, but again, keep in mind, this is 1979 inundation maps overlaid on 2020 data. So our feelings are that after 40 years of sedimentation fill-up in the Pearl River Basin, the reduction of the agricultural zones, which completely diminishes our water absorption rates, and the topography changes, that 38 feet in 1979 would have a greater extent intrusion into the county in 2020. That's the part that scares us. So we have identified the areas on the Pearl River all the way down. We broke it up into four different zones that we're gonna be working out of, and we actually have a fifth that nobody really in the media is talking about, but thankfully we're on top of this, and that is the actual reservoir itself. When they bring it up to 299 feet, you're gonna have backwater flooding into the neighborhoods and the reservoir, all the small tributaries that are backing up and actually backing into people's homes. So we are absolutely looking at that as well, and we are feverishly, feverishly working to, to try to get our heads wrapped around this thing and make sure that we're able to supply the, the citizens with good information and help in a way that we can for any calls for service. Again, our phone is ringing off the wall. We have, we've been able to secure some, some assets from the, from MEMA that's going to hopefully help us as far as potentially sandbags and things of that nature. So we're working on, on trying to facilitate that as we speak. So with that being said, the two big things that I would ask for you to do today, if it's your pleasure, is the signature from the board president on the DR3 and the DR4 to help us get some assets into the, into Rankin County should we need.
So, hang on a second. We are currently at what level on the river?
We are at 35.16 and rising up to 38 feet because they are discharging 65,000 cubic feet per second.
How much they normally discharge, you know?
Other than, other than that, they said something like 70.
Thinking, they can go up to 140.
No, I mean, what's the norm?
Less, less than 60.
Less than 60.
Yeah, probably, I mean, probably said less than 50.
Let me tell you, and I went up to, I worked up, went north of Philadelphia yesterday, two days ago before we had that last rain, and, and I rode in areas of three miles or more where the road was basically the levee, but it wasn't like four feet below, and the water, I said, oh, that water's coming this way. And then we got that rain, additional rain, but up around Carthage, they had houses sitting on little stools, and the people were somehow getting through the water to their homes.
Oh, it's the same way going up to Starkville.
Yeah.
It's, uh, people getting in their driveway.
And therein lies the issue. All the rain bands, we were, we were very fortunate in Rankin County, we missed the majority of the rain, even though we got some really heavy rain. We missed the majority of the rain bands that came through over the last three or four days, and now it's time to play the poker. All of that went to the north of us, setting up exactly like it did in 1979 based off the research that I've done. And, and now we're, we're fixing to have to deal with all that watershed that's coming in. And none of these maps, none of the footages, none of the stuff that you're seeing from PRV, nothing you see from the Corps Engineers is taken into any account for any rainfall that is forthcoming, meaning the rain that's coming Sunday and the severe storms that are coming Tuesday and Wednesday. None of that is taken into account yet, so.
So we don't have anything, though? We get 38 and then that's it? We don't have, what, 39 a beer or 40?
All right. Our maps, and this is the only data that we have, it went from 38, you'll see, that's the pink.
Right.
The red was 42 and a quarter, 43 and a quarter, 43 and a quarter, which was the, the 79.
83 was 38 and a half. But, but again, one of the points that Word was making earlier is important to remember that with all the seditation and silt and all that's in these areas and these basins right now, 38 feet before all this stuff was on the map may not be the same 38 feet now.
Right, you got a lot of building.
That's right. None of this stuff was here 40 years ago when it came about.
It's not being a hydrologist by any means, but just forward-thinking leads us to believe that after 40 years, the 38, where if water came at 38 foot 40 years ago, is gonna intrude closer or further inland, if you will, today.
Well, I will tell you this, though, on where we live, where I live, it's flooded all my life, and it takes more now to flood it than it used to. A higher, and I don't understand that, but it does. And now we're flooded right now.
I was talking to Mr. Sullivan earlier this morning. They had six inches of waterfall inside the home in 1979, and the 83 flood, it doubled with less water, doubled the amount of water coming inside.
Here's kind of, here's kind of the other thing that's important to remember on the height of the reservoir, that that's gonna affect this whole channel, I wish it'd come height of the reservoir, that's going to affect this whole channel, obviously, coming all the way down. Reservoir max capacity is at two-ninety-nine, right? So at three-hundred, the emergency spillway breaks. They feel like they can hold it at two-ninety-nine and open the gates up to large enough flow rates to keep it from going to three-hundred. But they're going to push it to two-ninety-nine and keep from flooding everything else. The problem is, once they open those gates at above that seventy thousand cubic feet per second moment, more areas flood. They can open those gates up to a hundred-and-forty, they can double the exit velocity right now coming out of it, but they can't let that number get over two-ninety-nine in the main lake, because the emergency levee breaks, which is about a ten-foot break down.
Exactly.
And then it's a far worse deal. So they're going to try to control it as best they can. Last, in the seventy-nine flood, they took those gate, they took the reservoir height levels of two-ninety-nine point nine, which are not going to go that high this time. They're going to keep it around two-ninety-nine. What that does on the back channels, what he was talking about in all those homes, a lot of the seawalls are going to flood, right? Most of the homes on the reservoir, though, are above the seawall level, so they should be okay. We're going to have some streets that get inundated, and we're going to have a good bit of water in the, in the yards and things like that. So two-ninety-nine is our magic number on the reservoir side of where we're looking at to break. But the mystery question is, how far does a thirty-eight really push into the subdivisions? We don't know.
I got something that you need to help on, like ASAP.
All right.
My phone's been hit, and I'm on their side with this. We need a load of bags on the south end, somewhere where they don't have to come all the way up here for sandbags, back and forth.
Yeah, so part of that's in that declaration?
But, yeah.
We can't, we can't do it until we get the declaration. That's right.
Well, you got bags done and out. You can't take a truckload of them down there now.
I can, I can, that'll be done. You got a location off the top of your head?
Either the, well, my first thought would be send, kind of, well, Brian, stand up, what you got to say?
I've lost, I sent inmates down this morning to the City of Richland, so maybe if you could work with City of Richland, I'll have inmates down there and send them.
What I was, what I was thinking at, at the Richland, I don't know, their county barn, their facility, where they, maybe their, where they, their equipment and maintenance and all is, that might be a location.
Do you want to call Pat and see if there's others make that?
Yeah. But there, Richland is really upset, and there's a lot of, some of them. And another thing, I know what you're saying, this ten bags per person, when can that change? Because ten bags.
Obviously, there's, there's some, there's some places that ten won't work.
Oh, I know, I know.
A commercial structure or something like that that is potentially going, ten's not going to do them anyway, anything at all. Most of your homes, a back door or something like that, you may, they may have multiple doors, may have to get all the way around the front, maybe, obviously, there's some areas that they may need more than that, and we're good with that. I have got another ten thousand that are on order, so I hope to have probably within the next, within the next hour or so, I hope to have about eighteen thousand on the ground, not filled, bags.
Situation I got is one guy, he's, he's taking care of hisself, pretty much, except he says he's afraid his well will probably flood. He said, I need about sixty, and I'll build, and I have my own sand, I'll take care of it, I just need some bags.
I get them, that's easy.
And that's kind of the key thing, I want to say one thing on the submerged management stuff, the key things are in these declarations. So approving that this morning allows us to stage resources in those locations. You don't need to be staging resources in locations without that declaration in place. So that's why everything's going to the EOC spot right now, until we can get this declaration to allow us to stage it.
Make a motion, prove it.
That's kind of the key part to that.
And we have, the road manager and I have.
I'm in agreeance with you.
Road manager and I have spoke, the sheriff has got some folks down helping us, trying to get some things ready down at the old county barn now, where we've got some things staged. They are feverishly working on that. We also looked at, we've got some, a couple of places that are identified, and it may be better to load some of that up on a dump truck. If you guys did the declaration, that would allow us to go set up a couple of self-serve locations with the bags and the sand in a specific locales that are going to be affected. So the Barnett Bens, the Oak Groves, all of those, so that's, and that may be the best way to do it, find us a cul-de-sac or.
Ten of the red door.
Yes.
Let me ask you this, what about?
Off the top of my head, I don't, I've got it at the office, we've got some locations to demonstrate.
What about a load of sand, Mike, what if we put a load of sand at the county barn?
That's what I was going to say, Jared, I mean, Florence Barn works good for us down there.
Yeah.
I got some more sand coming, the sand thing, I could put all down there, and we got to put a lot of moving around down there.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, and also, if Richland could do it, at their barn facility, it'd be ideal, too. That's where they keep their stuff. And so if we hadn't wanted, it wouldn't, may not, it's not going to take as much sand at Florence probably as it would in Richland, but we can do, set up in both places.
Well, y'all need to get all the details after this.
I know, I'm just making sure we can do it.
We just need to make sure they're going to Rankin County.
That's another thing, that's a good point. I don't want to say Ransfield County going, getting all our bags. Can, they, they need to show that they're a Rankin County resident?
That's totally on us. I've asked our people to just verify our own vehicles when they come through, make sure they have a Rankin County tag. And we're waiting on this call before we do anything as far as any type of advertising to make sure, and we're hoping that if we could put that out, that it would absolutely reduce our phone calls. I've actually had to move Dana and Melissa out of the nine-one-one addressing office down to my office to field phone calls. I mean, I'm telling you, it is unbelievable, the amount of call volume that we've got. So we're hoping that that would eliminate some of that. If we could get some of these self-serve locations opened up and let them, let them get at it, I can, I can keep them stocked with bags.
After we vote on this, I know you got, you know you got bags, you already said that. Can we go and have some move?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, well.
It's, myself and Mike Harrison will get together, and we should have that done by lunch. So in addition to all of this, the sheriff has got a tremendous amount of assets, we've been working with him as well, and the sheriff's got stuff that he's putting together now. I'm, Sheriff, if you would, if you want to talk about what you've got.
With, with Breach's help, he's helping me get the things I need, but I should have five boats ready to go today, three of them be shallow-water boats, and I have four high-water vehicles ready to go. And then Raymond staying in contact hourly with Mike, and we have every single deputy on standby to be called out. One thing I do want to bring up is that, you know, I noticed on the news on the television last night that they keep talking about Jackson and Flinley. I think that Mike or somebody has still press release with these maps, because a lot of these people probably don't even realize that they're, or they're.
Yeah, I've tried to push it out over last night and this morning on the ways at the reservoir side of it, but we need to continue.
I've got some folks supposed to be coming to the office at one and to get that out to the meeting.
All right, one other asset that we've also talked to during the night was Pafford EMS is staging up additional trucks and transport units to get people out of these locations. They're calling in all their reserves on the same point. I know they've been in touch with Mike on the same point. A lot of questions I've had have been coming in on what we're going to do on evacuation notices, as far as how we're going to suggest those things and how we're going to ask those to come about. You want to hit on that?
Sure, absolutely. If, if it comes to the point that it looks like we need to recommend an evacuation, obviously, we would, we would definitely do that, and we're going to look at that later on this afternoon, just as a prudent notice to the Rankin County citizens that, hey, it's predicted that this water may come up. If you are in one of these zones, and we're going to be able to get some of these map, this map data out where they can actually look at it, it may be prudent for you to seek shelter elsewhere. And we'll use a stair-step approach to any recommendations as far as evacuations are concerned, and I think our legal counsel's got some input on that as well.
So the DR three, which is the declaration of the local emergency, is a document that is required for this body to be able to trigger, as it were, the provisions that provide for emergency response that are contained in our emergency management law, okay? So by signing the DR three, what you're doing is you're triggering the provisions of thirty-three, fifteen, seventeen that provide for a number, a number of authorizations that just simply flow from that one action of executing the DR three. I don't want to belabor the point, you guys understand where we are. The reason that we have to take this action, and I want to say this on the record, is because even in the throes of an emergency situation, when everybody's hair is on fire, and rightfully so, the public's alarmed about situations that confront us, we still have to protect ourselves as a political subdivision on the backside from those who would want to come in and Monday morning quarterback our decision-making. So this record needs to be clear that this is, in fact, an emergency situation that we have to confront. We know from past history that if we don't warn the public, there will be repercussions from that, and so it's appropriate for us to do everything we can to get the word out. One of the things that you'll be doing if you execute the DR three, which is the declaration of local emergency, you're going to be authorizing your EOC director to take on an enormous amount of responsibility, and that includes authorizing him jurisdictionally with authority to make calls on things like evacuations. Obviously, there would be a consultation, there needs to be consultation, there'll have to be an open door of communication with the president of the Board of Supervisors, that's the authorized point of communication. So Jay is going to have to be available for consultations, and you guys obviously be included in those. But because we're in an emergency situation, it changes the dynamics here. Mike Word is going to have to make some calls, some very hard calls, potentially, in the face of emergency situations and get on top of that. The sheriff has enormous authority under the emergency management law. Your Road Department is freed up to expend resources wherever they are required. I want to make this point, it's the last thing I'll say about it. I'm encouraging you to execute the DR three, but do not forget, we need the governor to take action, and that's why you're going to execute a DR four, so, and you're going to be asking the governor to go on and make a state or a regional emergency declaration over this flood event so that we don't have any lack of communication, and it also will allow for better coordination among the various counties where we can cooperate. And so that's very important that we do both of those, and I appreciate Mike bringing those to your attention. So last thing I'll say about it, because I do expect this, the potential damage to, especially to personal property that will result from an inundation event like this, I expect there to be a request for federal assistance. And so it's very important that, and your guys are already on top of this, I'm just making the statement for the record, there will be a record-keeping requirement so that we keep up with man-hours, equipment hours, material, all of the other potential expenses that are going to be incurred by Rankin County and Rankin County taxpayers dealing with this event. And we're going to expect to be at the table if there is an invitation to get federal reimbursement for that, and we want to have our ducks in a row and our paperwork in order.
We were ready last time.
Yeah, absolutely. Perhaps this time, there will be enough interest from other jurisdictions to actually participate in that process.
Yeah. Okay, so do we need to make a motion?
Yes, sir. Need to add the DR three, the DR four to the agenda.
Motion by Daniel, I add these two items?
Say.
Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye. I just have it.
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Daniel.
Say.
Second by Brad, any discussions? All in favor, say aye. I just have it.
Mr. President, really quickly, two other things. We have got the crisis track that you approved us with a couple of months ago. That program is up and ready to go. We actually have a citizen link on there that will allow, should it come to fruition, the flooding that we believe, all they have to do is go in and put their address, take one picture, it uploads, auto-populates into our stuff and goes directly to MEMA, so it should absolutely streamline any damage assessments. We have damage assessment teams that are on standby to come in, should we need them. We have been in contact with Pine Lake, we're waiting on them to come back, should we need the shelters, some folks. Yes, which is going to be dependent on getting any type of quick reimbursements. And the last thing I've got with you, we have had some phone calls from the Methodist Disaster Group and the Baptist Disaster Group. The Methodist folks have assured me that they have several thousand, what they call flood buckets, that are down in Louisiana, and he is waiting on me to give him a estimated number. Obviously, we don't, there's no need to do that now, but I just want you to know that we have, have those mitigating resources that are on standby, and we're trying to get those coordinated so that we're not left holding the bag once this, once this water goes down. Again, last thing, I appreciate all your help and all of our partners with the sheriff and the road manager and all our folks here in Rankin County, helping us get through this thing. We're just getting started, and it's going to be a long process. If the water comes up and gets into these homes, you're looking at four to six, seven weeks before these folks can even return back to their homes. And so it could, could absolutely be a really catastrophic.
Couple of those statement letters on evacuation notices, things like that, updates. Will y'all's office put those out today? We can forward those out as far as.
I've, I've got some folks now, they're, we're trying to get the, do a media release. I would like to do it at lunch and go live with it. I don't know if it's going to be able to facilitate that, but I had some set up at one o'clock anyway, so we're going, we should have some new, the media releases coming out by one o'clock today. Obviously, we're going to be on our social media accounts. Ryan Grantham takes care of all that with the Twitter, the iSpace, your space, YouTube, whatever, it's, Grantham will take care of all that for us.
Put these on evacuation sites, people coming out, we evacuate, who are we going to care?
All right, that's why we would do a, we would start out with a recommended evacuation. It is, it is, obviously, the National Weather Service has predicted this to happen. According to our map data, we'll let you look at it. You may have water in your home, it would be smart for you to seek shelter elsewhere. And it is totally, even if you went all the way to the far end of the spectrum on evacuations, it is totally up to the homeowner to comply with that. They, they, they may decide, you know what, I'm going to just sit here and sit on my rooftop.
Hey, Mike, would you let us know when you get the information from the Corps as far as how much, how much water is coming into the?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Hey, last thing, is there any kind of other contact number to put out? A lot of people's asking about contact numbers, I'm actually, they got the nine-one-one system, which I don't want to bog it down.
Right.
Do you have a telephone number you're going to put out as far as a contact number for people to call that, hey, either one, I need assistance, not a non-emergency assistance call?
I'm going to get with Scott Cole and see if he has another number, because all of our stuff is VoIP, see if he has another number other than our main office number that we're going to be able to put out. If not, we're going to end up using the fourteen-ninety-nine, so.
Which is kind of what I was wanting to stay away from, just from the overload.
Exactly, and it is unbelie, honestly, there's five people down there answering the phones right now. It is incredible, so, and we're trying to field those as best we can, and most of them are extremely mad at us because we honestly cannot tell them to the minute when water's coming or exactly where the water's coming. We're peering into a crystal ball, just like anybody else. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, do we have an executive session? We do.
Wait just a minute.
Oh my gosh, a little bit of everything.
Hey, I got, Mike.
Before you, before you guys break.
Can you go ahead and make that call? Can you go and make that call and get them sending, sending that way?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right.
Give me about thirty seconds.
Yeah, do that, and, because I've already let them, some of these that were pounding me, know they're coming. And to answer your question, too, the Richland is fine, by all means, come there to their, their maintenance facility in Richland. If they, I just talked to Pat, he's, he's fine, come there if you want to bring bags there, set up anything, they got inmates filling bags now. So he's fine to use that facility, and then we're going to use the county, our county barn on White Road, okay? So as quick as we can get them there, I want to send word, because some of these people are in both locations that are wanting to get the word out.
Yeah, what we've got, Jared, I mean, right now, we're bagging probably a lot of sandbags right now.
Yeah, but do you have them, are you have them down at White Road, though?
Uh, don't yet, we're bagging them right now, and we're putting them in the bags, and we got them on trucks and trucks, and so we can move them around where the location is.
Okay, what I'm getting at, like, some people can just, to be able to pick them up, a some, if they can get their, like, I know one, if I can get him sixty bags, I mean, anything would help him, but he'll, he's willing to do his own if he's got to. He just needs, he said, I need at least sixty to protect this well.
And we'll have those bags at the location.
Okay, well, I just need to know when they are, because I don't want to drive up there and there's nothing there, so I need, that's what I'm trying to.
Go back a few minutes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm just, let me know where I can pass the word, okay?
I would say about lunch, we could have, have those bags and sell these alternative locations.
Okay, all right, well, Pat's given an okay, that's fine, and, you know, you've got that, we got that down there, okay?
All right. Thank you.
If I can get you guys to, this is hot off the press, yesterday, Judge, Chancery Judge John McLaren entered an order appointing Alvin Beck as the third commissioner for the Richland Creek drainage district. You guys recall, we've had some interaction, interaction with Richland Creek, and they have been without a full complement of commissioners for many years, and so they went through the process at, somewhat at this board's recommendation, of finding a third commissioner to round out their three commissioner complement, and so they have added Judge Al, I mean, constituent Alvin Beck to their commissioner board. What I'd like for you to do is to add the item of acknowledging receipt of this order, appointing Mr. Beck as the commissioner, for the purpose of including it in the records of the Rankin County Board of Supervisors, and so you'll just be acknowledging receipt of this, there's no action that's required, I just want to acknowledge receipt of the order.
Motion by Daniel.
Say.
Second by Brad, all in favor, say aye. I just have it.
So that was the add, so now we need a motion to acknowledge receipt.